Okay, I'm going to officially open the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is August 9th and it is 6:03. If I can get a motion to...
Wave.
Wave, thank you, there's Zoom. Okay, you get a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recording in progress.
Okay, all right, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Motion approved, Treasury Warrant 21-W28 and Warrant 22-52 and Payroll, W2-PW2.
Do I have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
City eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye excluding any COA wages. And approval of the minutes for July 26th.
Show move.
Do I have a second?
Seconds.
And any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
City eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. All right. Petition of wards, I think we start out with the department heads. We have the chief of police here.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, chief. Mitch reminded me, do public comment first, we haven't had anybody in for public comments. Do we, can we have anybody in?
No.
No, still no comment, sorry, thank you.
Do you like that?
They could get you back there, you know.
Oh yeah?
You don't have to come up front. Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay.
For the cameras in there.
It's been so long since I've been in front of everyone.
It's good to have you.
Thank you for having me. Carol, thanks, first time I'm meeting you at a meeting, got to meet you the other night, so nice to see you. Department update, operationally, we're fully staffed, everybody's healthy, I got nobody out injured, all is well. We've been running a full two officer shift coverage for complete four years now. Prior to that, we used to run the occasional one officer shift, it was quite dangerous, and we're finally getting to that point where, well, we've been at that point now, where we're able to run the two officer shift coverage. With the budget cuts, I mean, it's going to be a little difficult, but we're still going to do it, and we made that a priority by keeping money in wages and overtime and cutting a lot of expenses, but we'll get to that towards the end. Cruiser fleet is in decent shape, got two leased vehicles that will be paid off this year, allowing us to replace two next year. All right, as far as, I want to talk about some pandemic crime trends, things that we noticed through 2020 into 2021. Significant increases in assault and batteries, domestics, disturbances, and a lot of fraud cases. A lot of the fraud cases was online stuff, a lot of unemployment fraud, so those cases skyrocketed. We actually had a lot of town employees too that were victim of identity fraud through unemployment scams. Increased, we've had significant increase in calls to service at the Deveraux School, which I think, you know, is due in part to a massive staff shortage that they had up there, I think because of the pandemic, and also the kids have reduced recreational programs, so it was a lot less for them to do during the pandemic, and just being confined on campus. The calls went through the roof up there, but it's starting to level out now, and things are getting back to normal. As far as decreases, we've seen significant decreases in larcenies, breaking and entering, so almost no house breaks, no cop breaks throughout the whole pandemic, probably because everybody's been home. We also saw a slight decrease in drunk driving, which is probably due in part to bars being closed, and as people just not being out and about. As far as traffic goes, we had a 38% decrease in crashes between 2019 and 2020. Year-to-date 2021, we've had 57 crashes, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 57 crashes so far this year compared to 53 last year, so we're about even. Locations with the highest frequency of crashes are Barry Paxton and Pleasantale Road and Main Street between Maple and Palmigusset, so basically right out front here. I currently have a letter into the Department of Transportation requesting that they look at 122 in Pleasantale, just because of the high frequency of accidents there, just to see if there's anything they can do, suggest or change or anything. And Joe and I have been kind of talking, going back and forth with the DOT about Main Street, hopefully we can have some changes worked into the Palmigusset Road project, they'll make that intersection safer.
Chief, just one minute, 122 in Pleasantale, you know that there's a proposal to put a stone on Ralph Anderson Square there? Now, did you have any input on that as far as, because you're talking...
Oh, I'm talking about Barry Paxton.
Oh, the other end, I'm sorry, 122, not 122.
That was my question, was to clarify that it was...
We're at the wrong end.
Yeah, yeah, it's Barry Paxton in Pleasantale. It's a lot of people, we talked about that, you commute that way, it's hard to see coming off of Pleasantale, you basically have to almost turn fully to the right to see, oh, you live over there too, so...
No, yeah, no, I know, that's a bad section too. All right, I'm sorry, I was thinking at the other end.
Oh, no, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, Pleasantale and Main is fine.
Yeah.
Let's see, end of August, September will be our participat, we have a state grant for traffic enforcement, and there's an OUI mobilization at the end of this month that goes into September, so we'll have extra patrols out there doing OUI enforcement nights and weekends. We got the speed signing, the speed warning sign up on Palmigusset Road as you come into town, trying to slow people down right before they get to the businesses, the baseball field. We have another one that we need to, I got to connect with my friend Joe back there, that we'd like to put on Maple Ave coming into town that way too. Just trying to slow people down as they come into the center. What else do we got? And I have my FY22 road safety grant submitted, we're just waiting to hear back on the approval. Another thing I've been working on is complying with the police reform bill. As you know, last year they signed that legislation, which brings a lot of changes to the way we do business. I've just been working towards complying with all the new requirements of the reform bill. Some of the updates that we've completed so far, updates to the use of force policy, bias-free policing, and public records, there's many more updates to come, but they're contingent on guidance that will eventually come from this new post commission. So, it's going to be a process that occurs over the next year or two. The new law also mandates more training for part-time officers in order to maintain a police certification. So, at least five of seven of my part-time officers will need to attend this Bridge Academy that they're coming up with. So, it's basically, we have part-time officers that went through a part-time academy, everybody else has gone through the full-time academy. So, the Bridge Academy kind of presents that training to them to get them to the same level as the full-time officers. We don't have the guidance on that yet from the state, but I guess it's going to be happening over the next three years, and we can send people in stages, so we'll get...
Chief, I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Have you had any kind of training for your staff for like autistic children?
Yes.
So, you've had sensitivity training, I mean, how to deal with certain types of mental impairments and such?
Yes, yes. So, actually, so specifically with autism, we have, we've had training through the Deveraux School because they have, they have a big population of, you know, children with autism there. So, they've done that for us, we're actually planning on doing that again in the future, they've just kind of put a pause on everything with the pandemic. And we've had plenty of mental health training through the state and other providers, so...
Do the police and fire ever combine training? Like, that's obviously would be beneficial to the fire as well, is that something that you guys would ever consider like a combined training?
Oh, we, yeah, we would do that, yeah. If next time it comes up, I'll make sure that they get invited.
If I may, I would also wonder if it would be beneficial to have the dispatchers involved also in any of that training, just as far as...
I think, I think we did have them involved in the last time we went, yeah, the last time we went down at Deveraux.
And I have one other question, as far as the, for the police reform bill, is the state providing any funding, is that all on us, is that all?
That's my next public comment, so...
One more question. The bridge program, is the, is this, do they still, are they still going to be considered part-time, or is this making them a job?
Yes, so their employment status will still be part-time with us, it's just their certification now will basic, they'll basically have the same training level as a full-time officer.
Do you think there's going to be anything that says that they don't need to go to the full-time academy now?
So, that's a question that's yet to be answered by the state, because there's all sorts of, this, nothing's come out formally yet from the MPTC, Municipal Police Training Committee, and some of the talk is that it's going to make you a fully trained, full-time police officer. And some of the other talk is, it's going to make you a full-time police officer, well, at the same level of training, just for your department. So, I think that they're considering that so they avoid people jumping ship from, I don't think that's something we have to worry about, because all our part-time officers have full-time jobs elsewhere already, that they've all been in for several years, are very happy there. But you have other small departments that, you know, neighboring departments that if somebody gets that training and they have the opportunity to go work somewhere else full-time, they'll probably take it.
Thank you.
But yeah, I don't think that'll affect us. So, yeah, what I was going to say was that this kind of creates unfunded mandate where we're going to have to send these guys, so we're going to have to pay for it, and I'm not sure where we're going to get that money from, but there's been some talk that we may be able to use American Rescue Plan Act funds for it, as you tie in the increased crime rate, change in the crime rate to the pandemic, so it's, yes, it's a very loosely tied, but that's, it's been some guidance that came from the Police Chiefs Association.
So, we're going to be stuck with the bill, potentially?
Potentially.
So, again, good job at the state for creating a problem, proposing a solution, and then sticking us with the, awesome.
This, and there's also, it's, there's also going to be required training from like de-escalation tactics and things, and I'm not sure yet if that's going to get worked into their annual service anyways, or if it's going to be have some, be something on top of what they're already doing. So, as we talk about police reform, I'm going to roll right into body camera talk. I know we got it on later, but this is public presentation stuff. So, body cameras statewide, nationwide are becoming the industry standard, we're seeing a lot of other states just doing a complete statewide mandate that all officers are going to wear it. We assume that eventually in Massachusetts, that's also going to be the case. So, I mean, I support it, most of the department supports it, body cameras, the increased transparency, accountability, they allow administration easily resolve and investigate complaints, and also exonerate officers from false complaints and exaggerated complaints. And it's just, and also just provides valuable evidence in the prosecution of criminal cases. So, right now, the state is making 20 million available for the purchase of body cameras via grant. I'd be looking to purchase probably five or six of those with the grant money. Unfortunately, the grant money doesn't cover storage costs, so we're going to have to, we'll have to figure that out, so, because obviously, we don't have the money in the budget for it right now, but there's other opportunities to gift account, maybe ARPA, yeah, so...
Through the chair, if I can ask a question, chance of follow-up to the chief. Regarding the body cameras, and again, I know we have it on later, but this is more of an, I think, an open meeting question. When it comes to public record requests surrounding that, what is the discretion for that? Because I know in the public record law, there's exemptions for withholding public records if it's embarrassing to an individual because of a whole slate of different reasons, whether it's medically, or do we have, or does the state provide any resources in terms of guidance as to, if a public records request comes in for any arbitrary event, how you make that determination and how that goes out the door?
Right.
I mean, is that going to be part of the...
So, I have, I have a draft policy that came from the Police Chiefs Association, the unions looked at it and everything, and it does outline what can be released, what cannot be released.
Okay.
And I mean, that, those things would be reviewed for, for any exemptions to the public records law. So, anything with a, you know, like a victim's face, victim's name, you know, we wouldn't be able to release that.
And that would be a concern, yeah.
Right. And actually, some of these, some of these come with software that you can actually redact the videos. So, you could potentially, you know, you could blur out faces, you could bleep out names, just depending on what system you get.
Thank you.
No problem. So, that's, that's what we get on that. As far as community events and community partnerships, we're, we're doing our best to keep everything going with, it's been difficult throughout the past year to do anything in person with anybody, but we're just starting to get back to that now. We're doing a senior barbecue on Thursday, August 19th at noon, if anybody would like to come. So, we're doing it in conjunction with the Fire Department, we'll invite the dispatchers too. That's always a fun thing. We're going to do some car seat checkpoints at the beginning of the school year, so probably first couple weeks in September. Officer Grover is a certified child safety, child passenger safety technician, so we'll do like a checkpoint at one school, do it at the other school, and basically, people can just drive through, she can make sure that the seats are installed correctly, or if somebody has a new seat for a new baby, they can, she can help install it. That's all, that stuff's funded through that Municipal Road Safety Grant. We're going to participate in the Public Safety Open House on October 17th, and also the annual Halloween party that we do with Dispatch from the Fire Department on Halloween, October 31st. I'll bring up Officer Grover again, she's working on a T-shirt campaign to raise funds that will be donated to an organization that fights cancer and/or a local family that is currently in the process of supporting somebody that has cancer. This year's T-shirt was actually designed by a 10-year-old Rutland boy who was diagnosed with neuroblastoma at age three. He underwent heavy treatments and has been cancer-free now for five years. So, yeah, it's a cute little design, nice T-shirt, and we'll have that public probably within the next couple weeks. We got a continuing relationship with Assumption College, I have one of their students right now as an intern, who, she also happens to be a Rutland resident, I think this is her third or fourth intern we've had from Assumptions Criminal Justice Program, that works really well, they come in, help us a lot with administrative tasks. Right now, she's working on a project to kind of digitize all old records and get them attached into our current records management system.
Is this a paid internship?
No, it's volunteer.
Sometimes the schools will actually pay them too.
Oh, really? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this, this one's volunteer, they get, they get a good amount of credits for it, though. Continuing to host, we work with the Deveraux School for a worksite vocational program, where they bring a student to the public safety building, and under supervision, the student learns janitorial job skills and experiences what it's like to actually work in a, in a workplace, in hopes of better preparing them for the workforce once they're discharged from the program. So, that's, we've been doing that probably two, three years now, and it's going pretty good. We just kicked that back in a couple months back after pandemic. Also, we got in Deveraux is they start to get back to normal, and we start to get back to normal, we're going to plan on doing another K-9 demonstration soon, also introducing the RAD program up there, it's a, it's a women's self-defense program that we're going to be doing with their staff, and hopefully have another volleyball game, a softball game sometime this fall. As far as my budget goes, my FY22 budget is cut by a little over $36,000, which includes reductions to overtime, expenses, cruise release payment, and some of my own salary. I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to do the transfers that you allowed me to do at the end of FY21, that I was able to purchase extra equipment, tires, ammunition, make some vehicle repairs, so we're prepared for, for this year. I plan on trying to recoup some of that money at the special town meeting if, you know, the support of the board and the town administrators, so we'll go from there. Anybody have any questions or...
All right, well, thank you, on behalf of the board, we appreciate all your hard work, and please extend it to your officers.
Thank you very much, I will. I have, I did bring some stuff that I meant to give you when I started, but...
Thank you, chief.
So, this is, these are just some, I know everybody has numbers, these are just some bar graphs on current statistics, we got crashes, I'm going to give you a few, you So, you have the top page is motor vehicle crashes, you can see that they've gone, we're in a really good downward trend from 2016 to today. You can see 2020 went way down, and that's most likely due to the pandemic with probably the increased traffic, but you can see 2021, we're still kind of keeping it down there. Calls for service on the second page, you can see that's kind of an upward trend, as you can imagine with the population of the town growing. And then on the last page, it's just a graph showing arrests and criminal summons also backfiring, so another upward trend, so, things to, things to keep in mind.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right.
I'm going to try to be quick, you know, I think you'll see from the agenda, it's been a very busy couple of weeks, well, the contracts, I've been reading from, dealing a lot with, with water issues, the STANSA contract, we also have a request for proposal out for the assessor services in the town, so those are out and on the state register as well. I had an opportunity to meet with the principal of the middle school, and we talked a lot about, myself and Michael Morgari, talked a lot about security as it relates to the entrances to the three schools that are physically located here in Rutland. And clearly, after reviewing that, and I know that Michael Morgari has had a lot of history in looking at this issue and had some estimates and stuff, I did send a letter, an email to our state senator, our state representative, requesting some funds to improve the security measures at the doors. I think, you know, and I, and frankly, did more involvement in terms of knowledge than I want, and in Connecticut, when we had the Newtown school issue and the amount of shooting at the school, you recognize the extreme need for proper security at the entrances of the schools, putting in cameras and television so you know who's coming and leaving the buildings. So, we do already have an estimate for that, I sent the letter to both our senator and our representative to look for funding, I think it was less than $100,000 to do all three schools, but I think it's something that would make all of us feel better, improving the protections for our staff and for our children, I think is a huge thing, so hopefully they'll come through with some money, and I appreciate the work that Mike and the principal have already done in, in already having estimates given, and they are going to do a second round, another company to come in and look at, once again, to try to sharpen those estimates even lower. Mike, my rate was less than 100 grand, do you remember what the number was?
Yeah, that's roughly between 30 to 36,000 per school.
So, it's three schools, so it was about 90, it was just under, about 90 grand for the three schools, so, and if we can sharpen pencils, maybe we can lower it a bit more. If you go in, and I went into the middle school and looked at it, there's this little tiny TV screen or something that they look at, and they can see it was at the door, and it's really not all that clear, and the safety precautions, while they're of very, very minor nature, and then if they stay and said, say, we need much better safety protections at our schools, so, the center rep had been very helpful, as you know, they got us some money for the roof, and they're giving money for the wall over at the state park, so hopefully this is an area where they can help us as well.
I have a question about, I feel like a couple of years ago, there was conversation, Mike, maybe you remember, through, I feel like it was through the district, about trying to upgrade security kind of at points of entry, not just the schools, but town buildings and everything.
Yeah.
Is there any way that either, if we're looking only at the schools, that we can coordinate with the district to do something district-wide, or, I don't know what funding might be available?
Well, we were originally approached through the principal, looking for American Funds Act for this purposes, for the three schools in our, in our town. That clearly doesn't fit in any of the buckets under American Funds Act, so we talked to him about it, but truthfully, after our discussion, after looking at the school, it really became clear that we need to move forward with something here. So, truthfully, it's not as much my responsibility, he went to the district asking for capital money for it, and was rejected, so in my opinion, I'm worried about the Rutland schools, and it's my job, so we're going to take that on. We did discuss that, we wanted to do this in a step-by-step process, you are correct, and Michael had looked at estimates for other town buildings as well down the road, so once we do the schools, we will be next, taking it kind of a step-by-step process and looking at town buildings as well. I know that they were talking about police, the public safety building, to improve the cameras there, and what else, did you have all the buildings in mind, Mike, but you were specifically, I know you talked to me about public safety.
Yeah, public safety, it included all town buildings within the town.
So, we were going to continue to move, but let's get the most important piece done first, I think that the biggest priority right now is just protecting children and teachers.
If I can do through the chair, this did come, pre-pandemic, Mike, I know that you came in front of CIPC with a proposed, or with one of the contractors that was providing some pricing for that, so I think the project has been, has been vetted thoroughly and it's been kicked around quite a bit.
Yeah, as I said, the last piece of good news is that at least we have an employee today that we interviewed, who we think is going to be a good quality employee for water, so we're trying to work really hard on that component, we spent, to Joe's credit, spent a massive amount of time on water. We do have a meeting scheduled for the 26th to meet with participants in the sewer line from our town to Worcester, so that meeting has finally been scheduled, you know, makes it, you were playing a role in that, so I think it's at 1 o'clock, if I remember off the top of my head, but yeah, 1 o'clock, so we're going to do a Zoom meeting on that discussion, and that'll open up our first discussion on that issue, we'll see where it goes from there. But they did confirm in the emails we got that in fact, the meter is wrong, and now the question is by how much and, you know, what's the reimbursement should be to our town, and how it goes forward, that's going to be, as you know, a very contentious debate.
Ma'am, I think we have a question, I don't know if it must be related to this current...
Well, Kay, oh, that's Casey's, Casey's, the one that's black, that's for the...
Cassidy.
Is that Casey or who's?
Cassidy Maynard.
Yeah, she's here for the broadband.
I bet she has a question.
Oh.
I wanted to put my, just to let you know about that initial work and stuff we were going to be discussing for that fire meeting, we can also include...
Hey, Cassidy, I, I just going to let you know, for some reason, your sound is completely marbled, so I can't understand a word you're saying.
It's like the teacher in Charlie Brown.
Yeah, we can't understand what you're saying, I don't know if it's a problem with your computer or what it is, but we can't really understand you.
I think I was getting the gist that she, that as spectrum, they might be able to do some of the...
They might have some kind of a service that could help us with that.
The securitys?
The entrance of the schools.
Yeah.
So, Cassidy, if you do, I know we need you to have good sound for our discussion upcoming, so if you don't mind working on the sound and we could discuss that, once you kind of get the sound working, or I mean, you can do that offline about the schools.
Over to a phone audio, so it's showing improvement from doing that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, ma'am.
That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman, I got a lot to talk about in the individual lines.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do, I do have a question about the security, would those feed into the police station?
That was the plan, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, all right, old business, marijuana manufacturing host agreement?
So, Mr. Chairman, we've had many of these host agreements before us, now we, this is in the same typical format as everything else we've had, this deals with manufacturing, which is manufacturing is, as I understand it, a component of the plant, and can be turned into different types of products. This is no different, when they gave us, this is the same company that is doing cultivation in town, and we knew coming forward that they wanted to move in the manufacturing direction. They originally gave us some revenue estimates that were based upon both, so this is not any new revenue than what they had told us during the cultivation process. I do want to, and I feel I have to, based upon a conversation I had with town councils who reviewed this, town council wants, wants me to make it abundantly clear that this is not a revenue to the town in any of these host agreements, the money, the first 3% is considered an impact fee, and we have to make it very clearly that according to state law, we're going to have to demonstrate what the impact of these facilities around the town in terms of potential new police officers, or roadwork, or whatever it might be, that too many towns are thinking of this as just a 3% revenue, we're never going to have to defend what we spent this money on. So, that's one of the things that we're going to have to do, once these buildings are built and revenue starts coming in, we're going to have to actually look very closely and try to define what the actual impact is. I did want to make that clear because a lot of towns are like, okay, we're going to have this extra money to spend any way we want, and that is not going to be the case, and as I've said along, this marijuana issue is not some saving grace of new revenues that's going to help towns, that really, I don't see that, the marijuana issue being that. It's, again, it's really designed to reimburse us for the costs, and maybe it improves some police services or certain types of services, but I just wanted to kind of give you the impact of my discussion with our attorney about this particular issue, made it emphatically clear that this is not a revenue source.
So, are you looking for a motion for us to sign?
Yeah, this is a motion to allow me to sign this contract on behalf of the board, it's basically the same contract, we had, it just distinguishes everything down from manufacturing instead of cultivation. It's Mastery Holdings LLC, this went through the typical RFP process, the 30B process, they were the only company that actually applied for this hosting license, responding to the RFP.
I'll make the motion to allow our town administrator to sign the host community agreement between the town of Rutland and Mastery Holdings for a, this is the cultivation marijuana establishment.
Manufacturing.
Oh, manufacturing, sorry. Just make sure it's the right contract then.
Yeah, it's right here. It should be in your packet. It says, Town of Rutland, Mastery, and Mastery Holdings Product Manufacturing Host Community Agreement.
Okay.
Can we have a second? Second. Uh, discussion?
Um, Leah, did you see something on here that said cultivation?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I wanted to know.
Um, in the second paragraph, whereas, on the front page, whereas the company and the town entered into a separate.
Page seven? Cultivation. No, very first page, second paragraph.
Very first page, second paragraph.
Proposed cultivation.
Second line.
Yeah.
cultivation.
Yeah, but whereas, the company and the town already entered into a separate host agreement, proposed cultivation, we're now entering into manufacturing.
Okay.
As referring to the.
So we already signed that agreement.
We've already signed the cultivation. So I just wanted to make sure. I saw cultivation and was trying to read while we were doing everything else. So, thank you.
Yeah, she's right.
This is why we pay lawyers.
Right, and obviously our names are on the back. You'll just change it to your name?
We could, quite frankly, if you guys can just, if you vote to approve it, you guys can come in and sign it.
Only because the motion was for you to sign it.
Yeah, it's okay. If you allow me to sign it, I can sign it. It's fine.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
I can amend, I don't mind amending my motion that we all sign.
So whatever you guys prefer.
If you amend it, we can get it done.
I'll amend it.
We can all sign it if it's, if it's the motions change.
I'll amend my motion to say that for the board to sign.
Okay.
Okay.
And.
I'll amend my second ten to always.
Okay. Anything else? Do a roll call vote?
Go like I.
Then I would I.
Or City I.
Whitman I.
And Nichols I. All right. Next is letter on no intent for chapter sixty-one A, Iris Lane for signatures. We've discussed this several times, is there?
Yeah, this is just a document that you guys each have to sign. I think we recognize this already, just need to sign it so we can get it out to the people. It deals on the property on forty-seven Iris Lane, basically saying we have no interest in purchasing the property.
But it doesn't require a vote, right?
Yeah, I think you just need to come in and sign it.
Right, it's already addressed, um, legally. And new business, the American Funds grant for broadband contracted spectrum.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the second part of the American Funds Act that I want to discuss. We have on our Zoom meeting Cassidy Maynard, who is with Spectrum. You'll see most of my, yeah, pretty much all of the committee that is dealing with this American Funds Act money in the room. This seems to have unanimous support of that committee. The concept here is to provide broadband to basically upgrade our current system and to run it down to the senior center, community center, and to the water treatment facility, and to expand it down there so it will have access. The approximate cost of this is about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. That will be completely paid for through the American Funds Act. We expect that this, probably this work would probably be done in December, and we expect the check, the new check by then to be able to pay for this. And then there's the, the one issue that I want Cassidy to talk about is the benefits to the town, but also there's a continuous fee after that, an annual fee, which I believe is approximately four thousand, but I'll let Cassidy give you the specifics of that. With that, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay to let the representative from Spectrum talk about this particular project?
Sure. Hopefully they'll be able to hear.
By the way, Mike Moriarty has been very involved through dispatch on this particular project as well. So Mike is sort of our leading expert, and CM Geeks is here as well. Paul, right? Is it CM Geeks now?
No, that's Rick.
So, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. CM Geeks is not. All right, so I apologize not knowing CM Geeks very well, but Mike will answer any questions on the technical side. Cassidy, can we hear you?
Great, yes, I can, I can hear you guys trying to make sure. Is it better now? Is my audio better?
It is, and thank goodness, because we're talking about broadband.
Yes.
That's important.
Yes, because this, yes, it's important that you can hear me. So, yeah, this project would be fully funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. We are a sort of, you know, a certified member. We're a vendor that is fully compliant. We're fully FCC compliant. We're part of the federal state connected program with the funding, so everything is secure and good to go on that side of it. And the way that we did this network design, we were very, you know, Ron, Michael, Paul, myself have had a few meetings, and we specifically made sure to do this network design so that it would fall under the correct investments so that it is fully funded and there won't be any issues there. It covers under the necessary investments in water for sixty-six Wachusett Street, as well as for the full town in the broadband infrastructure for technology modernization. So it's fully funded, or fully, the project can fully be funded by the funding, federal funding, so nothing would go on to the town. Another big portion of this, I'm not sure if anyone else is bigger, just me, so I'll just say it in regards to a big part of it that was a big light bulb on Paul's side, is the, it would take away the need for the town, both Rutland and Berry, to need to work together to split every three to five years, coming up with all of the in the budget for end-of-life equipment. So doing this would take away from you guys having to come up with your own money every three to five years to update network equipment from Cisco.
Cassidy, you know, Cassidy, it's important because Paul was going to put in money for the upgrading of the equipment for this budget year, and he didn't have the estimates at the budget year, so in theory, we don't have any money in the budget to do those upgrades if we had required to do it. So this will save us from doing upgrades if we had no money in the budget for, so this is a, that's a very big issue. I just wanted to hesitate to try to let you understand that, Michael.
And like Bron said, that, that work needs to be completed by December twentieth, either by charter or the town, or all our network equipment shuts off, and it closes day-to-day business for everybody in the town.
Yeah, and that's one big reason that we want to make sure, and I've already talked with my project management group to make sure that if we do move forward with this, we can guarantee that we, I've already set some stuff in place to do some expedite to make sure that we can get this implemented by December. Because in December, once that equipment does go end-of-life, it won't be, you know, working. And we want to make sure that this is implemented and ready to go by December so that you guys don't have any issues. So with this, we had kind of discussed it, the police department being the hub location. The internet access for the entire town would go out to the world from the police department. And all of the buildings would all be connected through a dedicated fiber LAN where all of them can internally communicate with each other throughout the entire town. And there will be a Cisco Maraki firewall, which is a very, you know, very nice next-gen firewall that will be sitting at the police department, that will, you know, be that security for the entire town. So everybody communicating internally, obviously there's no issue of security because it's all internal, but then once it goes out to the world, it'll go through that firewall, so you're all fully protected, you know, all of your important documents. That's a Cisco Maraki firewall. Again, we fully manage it, and we give that co-management on the, on the portal to whoever wants that admin access. So we'll definitely be giving it to Paul and Michael, you know, if Ron wanted the visibility as well. Or, you know, whoever wants it and also whoever doesn't want it, I will not give you that. I will not put that on your plate if you don't want the visibility. But we will be transitioning the current block of static IP addresses, so no reconfiguration will be needed on that. We're just going to move that from two forty-six Main Street over to two forty-two Main Street where the new hub can be secured. And then the full LAN, you know, I don't know how technical you want me to get into it, but it's a certified configuration that connects all of the town locations on a transparent LAN extension. And it minimizes points of failure to just make it really, you know, more secure and more up to date. And it has a managed router service that connects all of the locations for a really good communication of privacy and security. And nothing is required for us to begin it, to do the construction, to do the installation. There's no money upfront, and once the implementation is complete, we can pre-schedule the initial, you know, the finalization of it until once the second half of the funding comes into America. I know you already got the first half. The second half is guaranteed to come in by the end of the year. So we can just make sure that we set it up so that you aren't going to get an invoice until your money comes in. And we're not going to, you know, charge you for something until, you know, until you can pay for it. So we'll set that up and then make sure we're good about, you know, how we do that. But altogether, it includes, you know, the police department being the hub, the annex, the community center, the public works, which again will be good. I know I heard you guys talking before about the water for the town and just making sure so sixty-six Wachusett for water is also on there. That'll give it a dedicated fiber connection, the library, the police department, all of that. So is there any specific questions or you want me to kind of?
So Cassidy.
Go into more depth, or what do you think?
Were you going to talk something about the security in line with this project, or? I mean, as far as.
So, yeah, that's the next-gen firewall, so that's our managed network edge.
So it's not.
And it's a fully managed twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five portal that is fully managed of the network. It has a firewall attached to it, SDWAN, for the entire, for all of the buildings attached to the network. And it makes all of the dedicated fiber lines secure going out to the world.
Through the chair, if I can.
Yeah.
We really, though, if we want to do this with the broadband, we have to go with Spectrum because they're the only provider, right?
Yes.
This is not a bittable project. It's just amazing when federal funds are available, all of a sudden these projects pop up for six figures.
Well, no, it didn't really pop up because I reached out to them.
Yeah.
I was looking for under the buckets, because there's very few things we could do.
Ways to spend the money.
Yeah, I was looking for ways that could improve our services, so I reached out to Spectrum. They had sent me, truthfully, it's been a matter of maybe two months ago, before the American Funds Act or three months. But, but I reached out to them, knowing that we wanted to tie in the community center, particularly the water building. So it wasn't them approached me, it was me approached them.
So we, we have then, the only maintenance cost associated with this is that four thousand dollars annually?
Well, that's what, that's what, Casey, if you could explain, I see it in terms of calculation, it's came to forty-six, forty, but if I recall, there were some offsetting costs that we already pay. What would be, after the three-year contract, because that pays for all the capital stuff, what's the increase in the cost of the fees on a yearly basis?
Yeah, so this, this is a, the forty-one, forty is for all of the locations, internet service back to the hub, and then all of them connected for the, for the firewall as well, and that is forty-one, forty monthly. So it comes to, over the full three years of the contract, one forty-nine, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, forty dollars. So that's the, the overall of the, for the whole three years, but it is forty-one, forty-one, forty per month for all locations. You guys currently have kind of a little bit more of like, you know, some of them have cable modems, some of them have this, some of them have that. All of that stuff will go away all of those expenses between the expenses that you guys have currently with Spectrum, as well as some other providers, if you guys have like a, you know, cable modem with Verizon or something like that. I'm not exactly sure, you know, exactly what the full network is, but some things like three to five years, the updated equipment costs and all of those things would all be eliminated. So it's hard for me to like put it into a kind of side-by-side comparison of what the difference of the cost would be, but it's a monthly four thousand, forty-one, forty for the three years. And then after that, we would then recontract it with you to lower that cost because all of the, the fiber will already be paid for and existing. And then we would renegotiate a term for, you know, another three years or for twelve months or for sixty months, depending on how long you want it to extend the contract after, after that.
Through the chair, I would just want to know what the costs are after that three years, because we're using one-time funding to pay for this. We've gotten into this issue before, where, okay, so let's say the, it comes down to three thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's, that's going to be thirty-six thousand dollars a year that we're going to have to come up with to maintain the system. So I'd like to see what that looks like.
That's exactly the way I was trying to break it down, Cassidy. And, and I know that there's some changes because the costs you believe are going to be effectively lower after three years, because you can't exactly say what the prices are going to be three years from now, but you suggested that you believe they'll be significantly lower than what they are now. But I thought there were actually fees that we already paid, so these new fees came in, but then you have to reduce the fees we actually paid. Do you remember what the difference was? The annual difference was?
Yeah, so like I was looking, like just for example, two forty-six Main Street, just that standalone account. Right now, you guys pay four hundred and fifty dollars a month for that one location. And then if I were to, um, let me go into, maybe at the other. Okay, so I'm. Got a full, um.
This is just being proposed, because we have the, this is the proposal behind it.
Because the, that's the fiber that's on that one, you know, at that one location currently. That would actually drop down. Then another location, two hundred and twenty-two dollars, that would eliminate.
I, I just through the chair, I guess the project sounds great. But without knowing what those costs are and what the differential is, I don't feel comfortable signing something tonight.
To you, Monsieur, we wouldn't be able to know what the price are going to be three years from now exactly anyway. So we'd have to give you some estimate of what we think it would be.
Well, I don't know what the current fees are either.
Do you know?
For the equipment.
Do you have the?
Um, yeah, no, I, so these, the rates that our service are right, right now are actually, so I, I went to our finance group and I got additional discounts based off of you being, I mean, this, you know, a town and in government and all of that jazz. If I was to just say, for example, at the police department, doing an internet access connection for five hundred meg, a monthly cost to that usually is, is for a three-year contract is thirteen ninety-nine. I, you know, did it for you guys for this three-year contract for eleven hundred with a free installation and then also not charging for any of the construction costs to run fiber to that location. The reason I say I can't give you something, what it would be three years from now, is because we don't have, we have the pricing of what our services cost in two thousand twenty-one. I don't have the pricing yet for two thousand twenty-four, but I, but just from year to year, rates of both, you know, us and all, you know, fiber providers pricing, you know, year by year is, is going down.
Okay, I just, if I can.
So that's why I can't really give a rate. I mean, if I gave an overall rate, it would actually, like based on a, just like a base rate pricing, it would be, it would be more than, than what I provided you in this quote. So I'm not exactly sure how I would give you a rate for twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
In twenty twenty-one, that's my only problem.
Thank you. I understand that. I'm asking for, we had talked about, we're going to see savings from expenditures we're already paying. I want to know what those expenditures are and what they're going to be, what they would continue to be after that three-year period, because we have to make a decision on a long-term investment in monthly expenditures.
Of course.
And we don't have the numbers that we're paying now at these locations, and I just, I don't feel comfortable signing something. And I just, I don't feel comfortable signing something without that. Um, you know, as much fun as it is negotiating the cable bill, uh, I really just wanna see, I wanna see the numbers of what we're paying now versus what we're paying later so we can make at least a good faith projection so that the town is comfortable affording this movement forward after the three-year period. That would be my only concern.
Okay. Okay, um, that's something that I can give, like my, I can help put together something with my portion of it. But it wouldn't be, like, I, that's not the thing that I, I would have all of the answers to. Cause I'm not, I, it's not just my, like, this isn't kind of a, a like-for-like. Um, so this is, this would be instead of, for example, you guys buying direct with Cisco for all of your equipment. So Paul, I know Paul, um, has, you guys have a relationship with the town of Berry where the two of you, um, split the costs in your budgets for Cisco equipment. Um, I know, I mean, that, I don't know, like, if an estimate has already been um, given of what that would be for December. But I know it's usually like, I think he had mentioned in like the sixty, seventy thousand range as a one-time charge every three to five years for equipment. So that's something that would be factored in, um, but I don't, I don't have those costs, cause I don't, I don't know what you guys.
Okay, that's, I.
Okay, so, so maybe, maybe, may, yeah.
So I can work with somebody to help, that I don't know, and I can do it myself.
I was just gonna suggest that maybe you and Ron could work with our town accountant and get the, the, the figures so that just we can take a look at it, cause we, we work off a very tight budget. So we'd really need to know.
Of course.
You know, what kind, what kind of costs we're looking at, um, based on what we currently spend.
Of course, and this is, this is something that we would be running the fiber. That's not something that in thirty-six months, if you decided you wanted to cancel and not renew this, it's not like we take out the fiber that we've already installed. So that's already there and it's already in play. So if you were to move forward with this for the thirty-six months, that you have the, the budget and you have, you know, the, if you, you have the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, it's not something that you are committed to after the, you know, the thirty-six month term. Changes can be done at that time. You can, you know, see where, um, see if it makes sense, if, see if it's working well. You can alter it, you can change it, you can upgrade it, downgrade it, cancel it, do all sorts of things uh, when we start, you know, uh, going over it. Um, you know, close to that thirty-six month term. And of course, one of those big things will be, it's already there, the fiber is into um, each building where it needs to be. And then you can choose, you know, what you wanna do um, from there. And obviously, a big factor of that will be what, what your budget is at that time. It'll come two thousand twenty-four and who knows at that point, maybe there'll be another federal funding program that you can, you can use. But, you know, uh, it, it's tough to, you know, to say um, what's gonna happen uh, in twenty twenty-four.
So I think at this point, I think that, that the board will, would not be comfortable until we have a little better idea on those numbers uh, before making any decisions.
Okay. So Cassidy, just to be clear, I wanna understand and make sure the board understands this. The contract that we would be voting on tonight is for the three years and not the costs of what would happen after the three years is over, when those fees could potentially increase. What I think I just heard you say is what part of our discussion was, is that at that time, you could decide not even to go forward with anything else. You, or you could go out with another company or do different things. So, but the, the vote tonight is specifically only on the three years, which is fully funded by the American Funds Act, correct?
Correct, yep. So this would be the full thirty-six months, this is what it would cost. If, if you were to stay with it after the thirty-six months, we would renew your contract or it would switch to a month-to-month, which the rate will not increase. Um, it can sit, go out of contract, stay month-to-month, or you can get into a new, a negotiated contract at that time. Um, or you can cancel it and you can, you know, change up what you're doing with the network. You can go with another provider, you can stay with us and change how, um, you know, the network is designed. Um, there's, there's all sorts of options once that comes. But for this specific project, that total of one forty-nine, um, is fully covered by.
So I wanna be clear, cause I wanna make sure I know what.
The funding, but of course, too, um, I just wanted to, you know, we, we, when we talked, I just came on this, uh, you know, uh, answer questions on the, the, you know, the, um, the project itself. But of course, if more uh, details are needed before any decisions, then, you know, let me know and I can um, be available to, to get whatever I can get on my side. But yeah, I think the, working with the accountant and finding out what all of the current expenses are, um, might be the best next step.
Okay, so just, just so I'm clear, cause we, we gotta go from what the board wants to do. We're gonna look at our current expenses that we're providing now in terms of the annual fees. Now, those, will they go away in those funds, whatever we're paying now for the next three years? Instead of the fees we're currently paying, will those be now paid for by the American Funds Act? So will we have a surplus of money of existing fees in our existing budget now or, or not?
Nothing current would co- be covered by the American Rescue Plan Act. And the reason why is because it doesn't fall into um, advancing the infrastructure. So, um, this is.
Okay, all right.
Hi. Okay, yeah, yeah, so I think we're gonna have to table this and have you and Ron work on, on the details of, of that.
I, not to open, if I may, not to open a whole nother can of worms, but was there no conversation about including the schools in? Because I know in Rutland, going out Glenwood is not that much farther than the community center and center of town schools.
I think that was.
The answer is yes. We, we're particularly looking at Glenwood School. And what, what we decided is that the schools have their own funding mechanism they could use to tie in from the school to the main line.
Okay.
So this in effect would make it cheaper for them to connect, cause their line will run right by the school. We also talked about something in the, the more longer future, is at some point in time, we think the broadband might be able to go out in the neighborhoods. And this might in the future also help the neighborhood there tie in into the future at a cheaper cost as well. So yes, both of those items were discussed.
Okay.
Yep, and because the um, fiber will, will be run closer, uh, when, um, and one of the big things, so the schools get their federal coming through E-rate. And when we do a survey, once these fiber lines have been run closer and then those um, surveys uh, come in through um, the E-rate four-seventy filings that the schools do, it'll be that much less of a cost for them to get the fiber, cause we can exploit it from the construction work that was done from this project. Uh, we did discuss it, but they get such a large percentage back from the federal government on the E-rate reimbursement. Um, that it didn't kinda make sense to double, double dip, um, the schools, uh, since they, you know, would get that uh, funding if they chose to go that route, um, through E-rate.
So, through the chair, just, just, this is crazy. So this is gonna be zero cost to the town for three years. Is this what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Zero cost, not gonna cost the town one penny for three years.
Correct.
Can I put that in writing?
That's something the American Funds Act gonna pay for.
Yeah, no, I, the way, the way it sounds to me is we got other hidden costs in there that, I don't know, I just.
Let me try to clarify again.
No, you don't have to. Well, let's just move on. We've had enough of this.
Well, yeah, I think we'll, we'll table it until Ron has an opportunity to speak with you and the accountant, so we get the details.
Uh, Peter Crane Nate's way, uh, as I understood the conversation, there's equipment that needs to be replaced by December. Is that correct?
So I just, yeah, and that's, and then, and, and I'm sorry, and I, I don't see anybody and I, I apologize that I didn't go there in person. Um, but, um, is Paul in the room?
Paul is not in the room.
Oh, okay, so, um.
The real core of my question, if I may, is what's the deadline for getting the contract approved by the select board so that Spectrum has enough time to order, receive and install the new equipment and run whatever new fiber needs to be run by December?
It's, it's really something that if, um, if I can get it in by really sometime, like, if I can get it processed and into our project management's hands by, by the earl, like, beginning of September, probably the latest, really this month. Because we usually need a ninety to a hundred and twenty-day window to be able to order all of the equipment and then get everything through construction and get everything implemented. Um, before you guys have your, all your equipment going end of life in December. And that's kind of the one reason I was asking you Paul in there, just cause I know that was a big stress thing that he was worried about is the timing, um, of you guys having to purchase the Cisco equipment directly if you don't go with this. Um, so, um, that's the one thing.
Right, my, my point was not to add increased pressure to the select board, it was to.
Okay, so it looks, it looks like we have time before our next meeting, so would, if, unless the board has any objections, we'll table it.
Well, I just, I, you know, again, I like the project. I just, when stuff has to come to us, it's gotta be ready for prime time. Like, I gotta be able to see the numbers. Like, we can't just sign a commitment like that. So.
All right, so Ron, you, you'll.
All right.
All right, thank you Cassidy.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any more, more, these are only the only numbers that I would have access to. So definitely, um, if you guys wanna look at what the current expenses are and then look at what the last expense was for the end-of-life equipment that was bought, which would probably would have been either three or five years ago. Um, uh, that would be the best way to calculate the, the difference, I think.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming on tonight.
Thank you Cassidy.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate, appreciate your time, everybody.
Good night. Uh, next is the TA Economic Development Plan.
Mister Chairman, that, that discussion is gonna be longer. I, I suggest maybe we should take.
We table that.
Yeah, just table it for a little bit and take.
Does anybody have any objections to?
The zoning board, one seventy-four.
Well, are, are we tabling it or are we taking something else out of order?
Out of order.
Oh, I, oh, you wanna take out of order, okay.
Yeah, just go to one seventy-four, one seventy-five and one seventy-six, and we come back to it.
Does anybody have any issues with taking that out of order? All right, so we'll move on to one seventy-four, discussion regarding the zoning board, increase members from three to five. Mister Saret, is, are you here to discuss that?
Yes, yes, thank you. Rick Saret, Chairman of the Zoning Board. Um, I've been on the board for almost twenty years and we've always had a three-member board. The statute, um, that authorized, empowered the zoning board allows either a five-person board or a three-person board. If it's a three-person board, and it's, it's strictly up to the appointing authority, which is you. If it's three persons, it has to be a unanimous vote. So that means that any one person can put the kibosh on, on any business that's before the board. We've got three full members and three alternates. Typically, all six members show up. And so we have three just sitting there. I mean, they participate in the discussion, but they can't vote. So the, the town is grown, is about three times the size as it was when I first got on in the early two thousands. So my thought was, let's increase it to five. We have people that are interested in serving. We have good participation, so let's increase it to five. That way, it's more democratic. You, you can have one person dissenting out of the five. If, and, and it's just, it's just a more democratic thing. And we're suggesting that because you really need five people at, at a meeting, let's, let, we have two alt, well, we have three alternates now. Let's, let's go with five members of the board and three alternates. Some people say you only need two alternates. Um, it really doesn't matter. So it was, it was just a suggestion. Um, I've been thinking about this for a while. I brought it before the board a few weeks ago and they, they seemed interested in it. So it's, it's, it's strictly up to the select board as to which way you wanna go on it.
So all board members were totally fine with.
It, it was, it was unanimous.
Okay.
There was a vote?
Excuse me?
There was a vote?
There was a vote, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I know, I, I have been on a couple of the zoning board appeals meetings, just kind of remotely. And I know you, you guys have been getting a lot more work kind of as the town grows. So I, I think it makes sense to, we have willing participants able to serve, ready to serve, wanting to serve, and to provide that opportunity for discussion and, and dissent a little bit. I mean.
Right, I mean, it seems like the people are already there, it's just they're not.
Well, the funny thing is that, you know, when I first moved to the town twenty-eight years ago, the, the select board was three members.
Right.
It was, and, and you, you basically went to a five-person board for the exact same reasons that I'm suggesting. And I'm not saying, you know, you have to grant it because you are a five-member board. But it's, it's, uh, I, I think it makes sense.
Uh, through the chair, I mean, I would, I would kind of disagree. I think we went to a five-person board in the town because we didn't have a town administrator position. There's a lot of other towns that function with three-member boards, the select ones that are three times as large as this community. I just, I think that with a lot of our boards and commissions, we, we've expanded them. I'm not sure additional seats add capacity, if you kind of understand what I mean, in terms of capacity for the board to function properly.
So, you know, intellectually, I agree with you. Just because you go to five doesn't necessarily make it better.
Right.
Um, we have a really good board. It's, we, we have members that have been on the board for almost as long as I have. And people get on the board, they seem to like it. You know, maybe if we had a totally different makeup, it wouldn't make sense. But it, it just made sense to me. I brought it before the board, they voted on it. Um, it's, it's, it's really up to you. I'm, I'm, I can go either way. We, we can function either way. It was just a suggestion, but I, I do, do respect your, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I just, I think, you know, to, to build on to that, we've added capacity in that realm in terms of we, we have a zoning enforcement officer. We have a, a town planner who I know also works with the zoning and the bylaws.
Right.
So I mean, there's that additional support that didn't exist, you know, even three or four years ago.
It's made a tremendous difference. We have, we have a strong building commissioner and David George as the town planner has added a l- awful lot, yes. So I think we're, I think we're, we're functioning very well right now. I think we'd function well with a five-person board either. You know, well.
Any, also any questions or? Um, does anybody wanna make any motions or?
Well, I think, excuse me, if the board decides to do this, um, and I'm not indicating which way I will vote, but I think there's a procedure we, we should follow. Um, and then we're going to have to, to fill those seats. Uh, we would have to wait till the next meeting to get letters of interest and recommendations from the chair. So I would recommend the board do it at once, because what would happen is if, if we vote tonight to expand that board to five, you still only have three members until we appoint those other two seats anyhow. Um, and we can't do that at this time.
You could make it effective for a later day. You could vote to make it effective September first or, you know, to go to three to five. You don't have to make it effective today, so there's no time for that.
Right, yeah.
I'll make that motion to increase this board to five members. And they're set to be set later in September, September, we'll increase.
Um, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but if, if you're going to consider voting on this, it's really important to us that you consider the number of alternates. I think you need a minimum of, you would need an additional two alternates and possibly three. So I just wanna throw that into you, you, you have really have to vote for that too.
So you got alternates, you, the alternates.
We have, I mean, we have a lot of alternates.
Already.
Already. But I mean, if we're adding more, again, this is gonna become an issue where we have a hard time filling vacancies we have now. And now you're gonna have to add alternates as well as board seats. I mean, and we're gonna have to get letters of interest and, and support for those alternates. I mean, I.
But I, and you, one of your issues is that you need to have unanimous of all three members for all.
Right.
Okay.
So. Uh.
Well, I, I, so, just to, if I can ask a question through the chair, the gentleman here. Um, if you were to go to a five-person board, you would still need, you would need a simple or a super majority?
Four out of five.
Okay, um, and the only reason I'm skeptical is because I've heard great things about the work that the three of you have been doing. And personally, I think that issue is something where you do have a growing community. You're going to see a lot more of these issues come up, um, and I think they are critically important. So, uh, I, the fact that there's no room for dissent on an issue like zoning doesn't necessarily bother me if going to a five-person board is gonna require a super majority anyhow.
Sure, I'm just a little confused by something Rick said. And I apologize, Rick, for goofing up the name before. Maybe like twice and I.
It's happened to me a hundred times.
So, so I'm trying to.
So, so I'm trying to understand, right now you have three members, you have three alternates.
Yes.
I thought I heard you say, if you make it a five-member board, you need more than three alternates.
No, no, I didn't say that, I, I meant that, I, I had proposed two alternates, you would have five and two, total of seven. The board kinda ganged up on me and said, we need that third alternate, so that would be a total of eight.
So, if we, if, if the board, just as a thought process, I would, I would assume that if the board voted to a five-member, a couple of the current alternates would want the full-time positions and ask for appointments.
That, that's my.
Then you'd have open, so then would be in a position, the board would be in a position to open, you know, to, to fill appointments for the alternate spots that were left still, right, is that what you're thinking?
That would be a side benefit, because we have some really good members that are alternates right now.
And given the time that the board would have to take to find new members and put it out there and everything else, what do you see as a time where it would be a good effective date, if the board chose to go to five? What would be a good effective date for that, September, October, what?
There is absolutely no rush on that, I could go October first, November first, you know, in the past, um, I have taken it upon myself to, to find new members, um, I've taken that responsibility. Um, it's, it's only in recent times that we've, we've gotten a lot more infrastructure and support in this town.
Yeah, my last question, did the board actually have a vote to recommend five members?
We did, we did, Ron, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll rescind my motion and say three alternates and five members to the zoning board.
Effective when?
Effective. Yeah, sometime in September, if they can get the paperwork back to us in time.
I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to do the, to generate the legwork, I'll work with Tamika to solicit letters of intro.
Do we have a second?
Wait, no, second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, do a roll call.
Okay.
Benoit, I.
Hey, can I pause, I'm sorry, I don't think we can have a sometime in September, because this is an actual board with authority to vote at certain times. I think we need a hard day.
If you wanna amend it to a specific.
Yeah, I need, I wanna a hard day, because, because this board at some point in time is gonna have effective powers to do something. So, I think we need to have effective date, an actual date when this would actually.
I, I think the board, if I may suggest, should be generous with the time.
So, why don't we say by October first?
Yeah, that, yeah, that way we know exactly when those powers.
Is that what you want, would you like that?
Yes, yes.
All right, I'll rescind it, or add to my motion, October first.
Waitman will amend, Waitman will amend my motion, and I think that makes sense based on September first, we really, we would only have one more meeting before, effectively before September first, in order to process anything on our side, so.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so go through roll call.
Okay.
Benoit, I. Waitman, I.
And Nichols, I. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for all the work you guys have been doing, too.
Oh, our pleasure, we enjoy it.
Thank you.
It's great, we ask for great support, Tamika. All right, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Uh, so, do we wanna go back, Ron, did you?
Once you finish, once you finish to one seventy five, one seventy six.
Okay.
You don't want to leave, she'll get stuck here at least two hours.
Yeah, so I'm gonna recuse from the one seventy five, and I'll have Carol come down.
So. You're looking at appointing election officials, officers. Anita, do you wanna present?
Uh, I think there's a, a list in your packet, Jeff was gonna put it in. Mass General Law requires a timeframe, the reason that we, we don't do these with regular appointments is because for some reason, MGL, Chapter fifty-four, Section twelve says it needs to be appointed between July fifteenth and August fifteenth, so that's why it's on this agenda. Uh, most of my election workers have been with us for years, uh, some of them as well over fifteen years, and right now, we're fortunate to have two of the names on, on the list of the inspectors and checkers. Two are high school students who bring, um, bring a lot to, to the work group, and we also have two uh, current college students on the list, so, um, basically, it's just accepting this.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion that the slate is presented to be appointed election officers for the town of Rutland pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapters fifty-four, Section twelve.
Stick to that motion.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. High school students, is there any, any age?
Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are allowed, yeah, with parent permission and a timeframe, you know, so many hours that they can work. Most of, um, most of, the, the, it's only the state primary every, uh, four years in September that the schools aren't closed, so it's easy to, to, for the kids to work, and we also have another group that aren't really called election workers that help us set up, so we don't have to bother Joe and the DPW that help us set up for our elections, because that's pretty labor-intensive whenever we're doing, um, right now, there's only one election in this fiscal year, so no one will give up a lot of, of work time, but like I said, we have a great group of people, so we're fortunate.
Can I have a roll call?
Okay.
Mr. Ives.
Waitman, I.
Benoit, I.
And thank you, Anita, and all the election workers, because I know it's, we've kinda run you guys through the wringers through the past couple of years with the pandemic and.
It was pretty bad.
Everything, so.
But we had a lot of support, and, uh, we, and, and actually, we didn't use a lot, we really pared down who we used, um, so that we didn't have a lot of turnover during the day, so we haven't seen some of these people for, for a while, but we're hoping to get, get back to our regular.
We appreciate it, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
The next is the Board of Registrar appointment.
And Todd did send a letter, and he did indicate, um, you know, to me that he wanted to be reappointed, his name is Todd Robbins, and he's a, a member of the Republican Town Committee, and, um, the Board of Registars are made up of uh, two Republicans and two Democrats, uh, the town clerk does not have to, can be unenrolled, so Todd is, is, uh, I'd, I'd say the Republican Party, I'm sorry, he's our Democratic Party representative. Diane Langquist and Holly Haynes are the, the two, um, representatives from the Republican Party. So, Todd's been on, I think he was first appointed in two thousand and six, and, um, he had a problem with his emails over the weekend, so I am getting them out, so, um, I don't have a letter to put into your packet, but he does want to be reappointed. And basically, the Board of Registars now, their, their duties, roles have changed over the years, because we have, um, through the state, a voter registration information system, so in the past, they used to hold a voter registration drive, things like that have, have changed, but they're our backup, um, if we have to have a, a recount to, in twenty sixteen, after the presidential election, we were one of the lucky towns chosen to have an audit following the presidential election, and that's when we really rely on our Board of Registars, so.
Motion to appoint registrar.
Todd Robbins.
Todd Robbins, is that the only one for?
Right, right, it's, it's a three-year appointment, so.
I'm motioning to reappoint Todd Robbins, the Board of Registars is presented.
If you could just, maybe contingent on receiving a letter of interest.
Contingent on receiving a written letter of interest.
Sure, good.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay.
Benoit, I.
Mr. Ives.
Waitman, I.
And Nichols, I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'll send the truth packet.
Have a good night. So, I guess we'll, um, circle back to one seventy-three, Economic Development Plan.
So, can I just speak out here so I can read the presentation and talk about it? One of the important issues for the select board when they hired me was the issue of economic development, and how can we improve economic development town without basically changing too much the character of the town? There's a lot of people who love the small-town character, but at the same time, increasing economic development opportunities has the uh, benefit of reducing taxes for everybody and taking some of the tax burden off the individual homes. And I think we all know that here, since we don't have a lot of industry, we don't have a lot of businesses, that the taxpayers are, you know, the regular homeowners are really facing the burden of paying for all the town services. So, a, a critical issue was the issue of economic development, I put together a presentation, and I'm gonna apologize in advance, so this will take a little while, because, uh, this is an important discussion, I think it merits some, some serious conversation, I'll try to go through it quickly, uh, and what my recommendation tonight was gonna be, but, um, I think it's the beginning of a long conversation we need to have, not just for the board of selectmen, but also with other boards and towns, and get, try to get everybody on a path to what we think the future of the town would be. So, if you would, go to the next slide, please. So, first in the beginning, I just outlined some basic information, how can we improve economic development in Rutland, and what is the current business environment of the town? Continue. This is basically just given the geography of the town, we all know it, uh, it's approximately thirty-five point three square miles. It has, I guess it still has the five villages, uh, that are defined, uh, it's about thirteen miles northwest of Worcester, fifty-two miles west of Boston, so, you know, we're, one of the things that is always becomes an issue, we're not right off of a highway, and as you know, in order to improve economic development, it's always nicer if you're right off of a highway where trucks can go, and you have the industrial parks, you have all those things, we just don't have that, we really are, for the most part, a residential or farming community. Uh, next slide, please. Some of the demographic, as you know, the town has been increasing, right now, we're up to a little over nine thousand in population. Average household income is about a hundred and seventeen thousand, with a poverty rate of two point nine four, we are not a poor town, we're not super wealthy, but we're above average in terms of income, in terms of the average. Now, that doesn't mean there isn't some people in town struggling, but financially, we're not considered a poor town. Uh, median age of citizens is thirty-nine point two years, uh, the budget right now, resident tax base, I didn't put that information, but I think we know it's somewhere around, if I remember off the top, it had about twenty-seven million dollar budget. Uh, Rutland demographics is mostly white, ninety-three point eight percent, Asian, four point five, uh, so mostly Rutland is made up of a white community in terms of demographics. Next, please. History of Rutland, uh, obviously, the big history thing is that we're the center, the synergy area graphically, uh, in terms of the town. Uh, a lot about the, um, about the roughest platinum house, and how the general, uh, basically opened up the country, uh, the West, to, uh, to, um, people moving, uh, out from the northeast and, and south to the, to the west, so opened up that part of the country. We have a rich history, uh, I had an, frankly, I had an opportunity this week to go look at the, um, the Woods Building, and was really impressed by how nice that building is, and how, in my mind, it's underutilized in terms of trying to get the history out, uh, but I think it is something that really can benefit us in terms of economic development, having that kind of facility, uh, as we incorporate that into other uses. Next, please. Rutland, again, this goes to the location, and where we are in terms of highways, just the maps of where we're located, next. Some of the positives of economic development, obviously, new business brings in new growth to the town, growth that adds to our tax base, while requiring minimal town services, and then we all recognize that as we build individual houses, that's nice, and we get some added growth from that, but it also has the burden of a lot of citizens, a lot of people who have children, and the cost of those children to educate them, and increased services of the town are an expense side of the budget that is a burden to the town. So, we love having new families move into town, and it's great, but there's a cost associated with that. What businesses do when they come into town, they bring in more revenue, but they don't have the big costs involved with them. Uh, yes, we need to improve the roads and do some things, but not that educational cost that we get often with individual homes. Creates new jobs for our residents to be able to work at, increases the wealth of our citizens, uh, not only for Rutland, but for the region. Uh, creates new local services, I think that there's a lot of people here would love to find someplace to shop without having to go out of town, maybe some specialty stores, medical, uh, buildings, something, anything that would keep you from having to leave Rutland to go to a nearby town, or in some cases, a longer distance to find the services you need. Creates new entertainment venues, theaters, restaurants, et cetera, build a check spending from outside the community and bring the money into Rutland. The types of development here, retail, uh, you know, I've heard a lot when I came here about, oh, we'd love to have a market basket, we'd love to have this big giant supermarket. But right now, our demographics and our location doesn't help in attracting that type of business. The same is true of commercial businesses or manufacturing, we just are not off of a highway, we're not in a place where, uh, people would, big manufacturers would find friendly to come here, and quite frankly, I don't think many citizens would want big manufacturers to come here, that's not the kind of town we are. So, we are open to small retail, grocery, things that are, are more specialized kind of things that might benefit the town, and try to expand in that area as well. Commercial, I think we could do something small, commercial strips, things like, you know, small health centers, or auto sales lawyers, dentists, that kind of stuff, with the increasing population, Rutland is becoming more of a location for those, those kind of people, so that's someplace we need to start looking at, uh, and see if we can attract those type of people, uh, to our town. What we'd want to attract this type of industry to Rutland if we could, highly unlikely, again, this goes to that home manufacturing piece. I'm not sure that if we wanted to, we would wanna attract people here, I'm not comfortable in looking at it, that industrial park would have worked here, I think that's why you never really saw any interest in that at the Heights property or any other location, it just doesn't sit well for that type of industry in, in our town. Uh, we really are, in a lot of ways, a residential-type community. Current model is, everyone knows we've had the RDIC, and truthfully, since I've been here, I've worked extremely well with the RDIC, and they have a very important role as it relates to the Heights property, and I think right now, we're on a great path with the Harbor Homes project, and I still see, now, this talks about the history of how it was generated, how it came about, and what some of the powers are. I still see this as being a long-term beneficial group to the town in terms of potentially looking at, you know, finishing, obviously, finishing the Heights property, which is gonna be a multi-year project going down the road, so they still have that part of it. I see them potentially as still being a body that can work with us in terms of transfers of land, uh, that, that these type of groups can do, and they have the ability to transfer land, they've done some work with solar, uh, they did some work with cell towers, I think they have a niche, and I think we still wanna keep them around to do that niche. But when it comes to looking at the future and where we wanna be, I think it's time to move in a different direction, I'm gonna talk about that a little later. Next, please. This, again, just talks about how the commission was created and what the purpose was, I think we all recognize it was for the Heights property. Uh, again, it talks about its eighty-seven parcel of land owned by the town, and it has the Plan Development District, HPDD, which is working on the Harbor Homes project right now, and we're currently looking at using Harbor Homes, of this, this land, the Heights property, to do Harbor Homes, which now we're looking at between eighty-eight, one hundred and forty-two units of senior housing, fifty-five and older. For those people who haven't seen this, and one of the reasons that I wanted this on public access is because people have to understand that that project can bring in a significant amount of revenue to the town. Not only in the sale price of the property, but more importantly, that selectmen let me know all the time, is in the value of the yearly tax revenue that's gonna come in from the project, and it doesn't have a lot of cost to it, because seniors, obviously, don't have children to go to school, so this is gonna be, in my opinion, we still got some ways to go, we gotta get it through to an actual closing, but we're on a good path to really have what I think is gonna be, uh, a development that will help our citizens. I think you're gonna find that there's a, quite a few citizens in town that have got to a point, they don't wanna take care of their house anymore, it's too big for them to handle, this might be an attractive place for them to stay in Rutland, and be able to downsize to a smaller facility, so they can continually live in town. So, a lot of advantages, there's a beautiful complex that's being proposed, uh, we'll see if it, and again, I know there's always some doubters who are wondering if this is gonna become a final project, but I feel good about where we are at this point, and look forward to seeing this move forward. Now, we have the RDIC, and again, I think there's a purpose for that, but I think it's time to move forward and to create some excitement, and to get people focused in a different avenue from the, than from the Heights property. And one of the things that I'm proposing here is that we create an Economic Development Commission, which is different than the RDIC. This is a group that will really focus on economic development, particularly things like retail, light commercial. One of the big things they think is important here is looking at our agricultural community and how we can improve the agricultural community, and specifically, I think agricultural tourism is getting more and more popular, I think that this should be one of the big missions of this group, to look at how we can organize the, the assets we hire, have in the town, uh, you know, our farms, our, you know, the breweries, um, uh, the, the trails, the, even, even things that are slightly out of town, uh, like the ski, the ski, um, mountain, how we can use all of those assets in the area to actually be able to increase economic development, uh, opportunities, particularly in the area of agriculture or tourism. This is the makeup of the board, and I've given you a separate sheet for the makeup of the board. If somebody from the RDIC wanted to leave the RDIC and go to this board, they can, the appointments are made by the board of selectmen, but you can consider who should be on this board, I, I really think it's extremely important that we pick carefully who on that board is and what you want the future of the town to love. what you want the future of the town to look at. Because what we gotta do is not just get the economic development commission or just the board of selectmen, we need to get the town in a mode where everybody supports the, the progress and the, the way we see the town's future develop. I think it's important that this committee works with all the different groups to try to increase and get people to buy in to whatever our future's going to be. As you'll see here, there's a designated from the planning commission, one from the conservation commission, a building official, resident, and business owners would like to get people. I'll see that I changed the makeup a little bit to give more time from residents, particularly business people who might want to be on the board, to be involved with, with the board in terms of the term. I think it's really critical that people like myself, the town planner, the building commissioner, conservation, all serve as non-voting members, but actually help them in terms of supporting their activities and trying to make sure they have the resources needed to actually be successful. One of the things I'm hoping we can do here is maybe use a little bit of the American Funds Act to do some things around tourism, to use that money to maybe develop a map of the town with all the different businesses and stuff and to be able to promote that map. And as I said, to me, an idea that it might be something we look at is, and I talked to the head of the historical commission about, what if the Woods Building was a, a place to introduce a tourist to Rutland? And we set up it as sort of an introductory stop. You come and you could get flyers about the town to horseback riding or to the rail trailer, whatever it is, and pick up those up. At the same time, learn a little bit about Rutland's history while you're there. So there's all kinds of avenues that we would want this group to explore. I think this is critical to start moving this forward. I keep hearing ideas, all kinds of people have different things. We need to focus those ideas into one group and actually have somebody come out and move forward with a plan and be that, that organizing group that makes things happen. Go ahead. Committee charge, and I changed this a little bit. I changed the first one in here to basically look at agricultural tourism, because I really believe that that could be the future of the town in a way that I think that the citizens could support it, where it won't overtake the town, but still increase economic development opportunities. One of the big things they think we need to look at is, in order to increase tourism, you have to have a place to stay, a destination. So things like bed and breakfast or a small hotel, something that where you come, you stay in town, and then you spend your money in town versus just coming in for the day and leaving and staying in some other, other town. So that's one of the things that I think we need to look at. Advising the select board on economic development issues, bylaws, policies that might be favorable to economic development, encouraging business investment, commercial, growing districts, hopefully increasing our, our total commercial tax base while minimizing the impact on local services. I think that's crucial, that we had to make sure that, you know, we don't spend more money than we take in. This is a way to try to help the town and help citizens take some of the tax burden off of citizens. Identifying changing economic development trends and develop recommendations to maximize interest in the community and attract those potential new businesses. Assisting with generating local employment opportunities, advocating for state and federal grants, incentives for improvements in regulations to help advance our economic priorities, establishing relationships and improve communication with local businesses, acts as a liaison for the town with the business community. I think the business, the Rutland Business Association did some of that, and it just kind of faded away in recent times, but that would be a new role for the economic development commission, to create that climate where all the businesses could come together and work together.
Can I, can I jump in with a question? I mean, a couple of questions.
Okay.
There seems to be a disconnect between the proposed committee membership and the tasks at hand in our current staffing. So for example, advocating for state and federal grants incentives or improvement regulations, who would have knowledge of that on the proposed board? I mean, so, okay, so follow me for a second. I mean, Holden has an economic development commission, but it's staffed by primarily town staff, and it serves a similar function. When you look at our actual staffing, half of Dave's position, for example, the town planner, is supposed to be community development, which would encompass about ninety percent of this, right? So the idea, and this is my fear of what's gonna happen, is we have another commission. Okay, when we marketed for the first time ever the Heights property two years ago, Mike Nicholson, the town administrator, had for the first time in Rutland's history, the County of Economic Development, the secretary, undersecretary come out to visit. We had never marketed the property or even listed it for sale before. We just thought, it's kind of like the Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. And nobody came. And so when we're talking about economic development, we're talking about when it comes to resources, the resource allocation, something that's very specific in terms of state programs, federal programs, and the state has services set up to help communities with that. If we're creating a commission to talk about these things, that's great, but if you're expecting the commission to be able to do these things, that's, it's not gonna happen, right? Because you don't have the expertise in that commission, which is why Holden and most of the other communities around us either have a part-time person specifically designated as an economic development coordinator, we don't have the funding to do that, or their economic development commissions are primarily consisting of town staff because it helps business owners navigate the processes and systems. For example, when we had at a public meeting, a business owner, brewery owner come to us because there was some confusion about permitting, about what's allowable, what's not, that person, regardless of the issue and whether that person or the issue was right or wrong, felt like they had to navigate between ten different people at the town level, departments, divisions, boards, committees, to get a good or effective answer. This commission should serve, in my opinion, as a one-stop shop for somebody trying to look for those answers to ease that burden. And I don't think the way that it's currently being proposed, it's going to serve in that function.
So a couple of questions. I think you're, first of all, I think you're absolutely right in terms of the town staff is gonna have to be the supporting team for the, you're absolutely right, the commission members aren't gonna do a lot of this stuff. That's why particularly David George, who's our town planner, as you said, his original intention also be a business person or an economic development component of it.
Community development coordinator.
Community, yeah, title, community development coordinator. David would be a big player in that, that's why I already talked to Dave about that, and David's willing to do that. As well as I need to be very engaged with this, because you're absolutely correct, most towns do have economic development directors either on a part-time or full-time basis. We are definitely not there yet, but as the town continues to grow and as things move forward, maybe we will be there. It's not, we're not, we're nine thousand people, we're growing quickly. So there's a possibility that in the future, that that part-time economic development position could come in place. But I think till then, till then, town staff is gonna have to play that role. In terms of a one-stop shop, you're correct, and you know as well as I do that businesses have reached out to individuals, they reached out to you, they reached out to me, they reached out to Mike, and it's not working that way. Because nobody's been identified. We want to make this group be the identified group where everything goes to them. And if they have to firm something to David or to me or something, that's fine, but we need, right now, there is no, RDIC, you know, some people think that's the business group in town, but it's not really well established in terms of retail and small everything. That's why this group needs to be refocused, and the people in this group, if we can get some business leaders on here, you know, people talk in the business community and that networking is extremely important, but, but you're correct, it's gonna require me and David to play a major role in this, and both of us intend to do such a thing. CDBG, what you're talking about, CDBG grants often.
No.
Well, economic development, they use CDBG grants for both building and for downtown improvements and stuff. So that's one of the business grants you can use for money that, that they do, economic development directors work a lot with that.
We're not eligible for that funding.
I know, no, actually, we're not, but we're, we're, we're not eligible for an automatic grant, right? We can, but you can, you can actually apply for small things directly as a small town.
Yeah, but again, it's not.
But it's hard.
We're not, no, we wouldn't be competitive. I'm talking about, like, again, the, the Department of Economic and Community Development through the state has other resources built, not just block grant funding, I mean, downtown initiative funding, the Baker-Palito administration pushed that out. Most communities got one of those grants, and I don't believe we did. So, I mean, it's just, that has to live somewhere, that stuff. Mike started to do it, it's in our town planner, it's in that job description. So, I mean, this stuff has to, if we're gonna take this seriously, it's not just a board or a commission, we have to start working with our state partners to see what's available. And I know that there was an increased focus when Mike was brought on, and then it carried over to you with community contact stuff, getting grant funding for some of these projects and things like that. And that's not something we had historically done before, because there wasn't any institutional knowledge as to how to access that, right? But that stuff needs to live somewhere, and a board or commission's not gonna be able to handle that. So we really need someone to be, either be feeding the board or commission that information or pursuing it as part of their day-to-day activities, if we want to take this seriously.
Well, listen, the reason this is good for you is because I'm taking it seriously.
Right.
But we need to have an organization. Right now, we have nothing. We really don't have anybody who's focused on this. This is intended to begin that focus, to begin that process, to set up essentially what you're saying. But it's gonna take time for us to build it into what we want to build it into. One of the things being is that, and you're absolutely right, me and David have to engage with this group and play a role in it until such time as we grow to eventually have a part-time economic development. But if you can't grow it, there's no focus at all. Right now, there's no focus at all in Rutland. And it's sad, when a business person comes to you, you know, they're passed around. Mitch gets him, and Mitch calls me, and I'm getting, and I gotta get everybody involved in it. There should be one focus point, that's why I think we really need to build a website. We're talking about updating and upgrading the website. One of the things I know you're talking about is building an economic development page. It lists, Dave, is the key person. It lists whoever the new chair of economic development, it lists me, and starts to break it off. Okay, if you need to have somebody look at plans, you're gonna talk to David McCray. You know what I mean? We need to define that so people don't have to figure out where to go. It should go one page and all that should be spelled out right on the internet page. That's one of the things we're gonna be talking about. But you're, you're right, I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take some Do we have another slide? I think we're pretty much, okay. This goes to the tourism model. I, I can only say that I think that this town could do much more in the tourism area than it's doing right now. We got a lot of great things. We got the breweries, we got the rail trail, we got horseback riding, we got places you can fish, there's just the state parks here, the ski is not, skiing is not far away, Worcester's really close by. There's so many different things that you can do if you want to come to Rutland to enjoy the day. You know, people are getting back into just going to visit a farm for a day, making sure we could work with the farmers to see what farms are open, to buy meat or to buy eggs or whatever it might be. You know, it, it, everybody's doing their own thing, and there's no, doesn't seem to be a lot of cooperation from even farm to farm. That's one of the things that I want to do, is try to get everybody working together, and that that's one of the focuses I think that the economic development commission should have. And I think that's the future. Was it tourist town? I think we all know that. Tourist towns usually have small populations by nature, but they tend to grow during, and they basically grow during summer once the tourists come in. We have those assets to attract people. The key is that once they're here, how to get them to stay for a little while. Go ahead, next. But look at these attractions. This kind of blew my mind as I was trying to see all the different attractions in town, what you could do. The greenways, the state park, horseback riding, the Rufus Putnam, Putnam House, the brewery, pubs, all the different farms in town, campground, town activities, Fourth of July celebration, all the different things we do, churches. Next page, or did you skip a page, one or another? Okay, Midstate Trail, Route 121, Wausau scenic, food truck festivals, Putnam Park, needs work, but that, that could be a nice asset going forward for fishing and everything else. Hope Bridge Conservation Area, Therapow Wildlife Management Area, Water River Watershed Area, Historic Cemeteries, Old Firehouse, Central Tree, Small but Important, golf course, long bond fishing, boating. There's a lot of things you could do, and we're not even, this is just in Rutland, we're not looking nearby that could attract people. The restaurants, Christmas tree, maple syrup, the specialty shops, antique shop, flea markets, you could do a lot more of that here than we're doing. The key thing that I think is critical is trying to find out how we can attract a bed and breakfast or a small, someplace where people could stay overnight, maybe, just a thought, I don't know, a parcel seat on the Heights property. After we were building a place here, why couldn't there be a bed and breakfast or a small hotel, something on that property if we're trying to attract people to come and stay. This is also beneficial when family comes to visit you, or people from out of town, they can come in, they can stay someplace. And we gotta make sure that that fits in the character of our town, but we don't want a skyscraper here, we're talking about something small that's pretty, that would fit really well in. Golf course is a huge asset, the brew pubs, ice cream shops, ski shops. I just think of the, even the restaurants here, Salt Tree Grill, it's a great restaurant, the, the one where you have the hot dog stand on four corners. That's a fantastic little place there. The tourists will go crazy if they go and get lobster rolls and anything else over there, I think. And then you talk about Worcester, and all the things that are going on, we've got the ski lift nearby now, Worcester, the Hanover Theater, the Art Museum, Echo Terrarium, DCU Center, they're all within, what, twenty minutes here?
Yeah.
You know, think about that. And, and I, I live in Holland, which is right next to Sturbridge, right? And all these hotels keep being built, I'm like, Jesus, Sturbridge is not, now, I know it's popular with the village and everything over there, but why is there so many hotels being built? Because people stay there only for one night, and they go, you know, they do the Sturbridge bills, they stay overnight, they go to some flea market, and then there's nothing else to do, not a lot going on. Or they have to travel to Worcester. But the reason they're building so many hotels is because there's such a shortage in Worcester of hotel space, they're building them in Sturbridge, and people are commuting back and forth to Worcester. We're closer than Sturbridge in terms of a hotel area, why couldn't we be a mini Sturbridge, you know, mini Sturbridge? Why couldn't we attract those people to come here? I think it's something we could do if we could find, you say, find a place for a small hotel sometime. So this goes to what do we want to look like in the future? And that's one of the things, do we want to be a tourism town? There's a lot of benefit to it, but is that something, are people gonna be okay with people coming in from, out of town? Businesses will love it, but do residents want more and more people? I think it's the type of economic development that's less obtrusive than a manufacturer or large B, you know, big box stores or whatever it is. So I think it, it's better, but that's one of the things we need to get the community to buy into. You know, what, what do we have to do to market? And that goes to using some of the American Funds Act, you can use that for tourism is one of the buckets. So we could use some of that money to attract tourism and to create some tourism things to be able to get people to come in. What's the long-term benefit to Rutland? And one of the negative issues that we might be concerned with that could be traffic from tourism, right? And what is the impact of that? And we don't have any concerns with how we would deal with those kind of issues. So these are the things that I wanted to talk to you about. I, you know, we keep talking about economic development, and I guess I'm kind of tired of just talking in general terms. I want to kind of get specific here and say, okay, this is where we're gonna start, we're gonna create an economic development commission, we're gonna start taking concrete actions to move the town forward. We can talk about it forever. This is a, you know, creating an economic development commission and setting up a charge and starting to get, is a specific action, then trying to organize businesses. I have, I've been trying to build a list of businesses in town, the email list, I, I can't, I don't know her name, she brought me in. A woman had, and her husband had taken a bunch of time, and I have a storage device on my desk, where she, as part of her job or work, created a list of businesses in town. So we're gonna use that and build that into our database. I really appreciate, I wish I had her name, but I really appreciate the work she's done.
She's on the ad commission.
Is she on the ad commission? So she gave me the list, and I have, I've gotta put it onto our computer, but we can start building so we can communicate with the business community. Right now, you know, I came in, I wouldn't have so much as an email list of any businesses in town, so we're trying to build that, and that's part of what we would want, a network of discussion to bring people, to get them on the same page to move the town forward. So with that, you know, the action I'm asking for you tonight, I gave you another sheet that outlines the commission. I'm not asking you to vote for it exactly the way I did it, but I want you guys to decide if this is the first reaction you want to vote for, and, you know, do you want to create this commission? I've talked to the individual members of the select board about this a bunch of different times, why I think this is important, but at the end of the day, it's up to you guys.
This was one of the issues that came up during our table, it's something that we wanted to look going forward towards.
Yeah.
So this is, I think, a kind of an overdue discussion and I think, I think, you know, if I'm gonna recommend something, I think this is a good start.
So I, I know it lists the members and such, and Mitch, you, you had talked quite a bit about who's actually on the board to make it the most effective, but, so you're looking at having somebody from planning, having David, having you. So were the other people that you thought Mitch needed from the town that needed to be on it?
This is just a different structure than what a lot of communities around us do. And I don't want to recreate the wheel. Again, I think we're talking about, you're talking about several different things here. We're talking about tourism, we're talking about aesthetics, we're talking about that. I mean, there's also the component of, you know, amenities, access to resources. You know, my concern is, it's, it's great to talk about these things, but we've missed on a lot of opportunities that have been available to us by state partners because we haven't been proactive with this. So, I mean, I'm all for the creation of a commission, but I, I don't, the way this is currently structured, I don't necessarily see us adding capacity through this commission.
Just, just so you know, Mitch, this was based on the Charlton Economic Development Commission that they recently passed last year or so. So this is very much like the Charlton model. That's what, Charlton is, is an up and coming kind of town too, they're kind of growing in terms of economic development. So I think it's been passed there for the last, about, within the last year and a half or so. That's where this model came from.
So we have a master plan and we have a cent, a town center plan. And I don't see how, they've been doing a lot of work and I don't see any representation from them nor an inclusion of them. They seem to be possibly at cross purposes if they don't come together.
And that was gonna be one of my comments was, I guess, have you, we haven't, I know the town center study just closed and CMR PC is putting together that final report and everything, so I don't know if you had talked with Dave George or anything about that in the master plan. The survey just closed and I think the survey provides a lot of information as far as what town residents want. And, and we have to be a little bit mindful because it's not necessarily what's feasible, but it's also what town residents as a whole want. And it was, I forget what the final number was, over eight hundred, almost a thousand participants in that survey. And then I think there were about six hundred or six fifty for the town center study. So some of those, there's overlap for sure, but not all. And just kind of to get an idea as to what, you know, what the town as a whole is thinking resident-wise. Because you're right, we need buy-in from the residents. We can't just go off and do something without some sort of support, so.
To your point, you're absolutely right. So the master plan, the, the center study committee, all of that, that is all information that should go to the Economic Development Commission for consideration and discussion. So keep in mind, this is the formation of it. And the information they use to build and grow would be all the information background you're talking about. So any economic development commission that's already in place, forget about this one, they use all new information as it comes in, demographic changes, all that. If part of the calculation is how they move forward. So I think all of the information is done will actually meld very well with this group. Now, again, I want to stress that the makeup I put in here was the makeup of Charlton, sort of like that. If you think that the makeup could be improved by adding somebody else, I, I don't have any objection to it. It's a, whatever you guys want to do. I just want to see that central point of connection. Because that's what you need. We're gonna have a master plan, we're gonna have a center. Who's gonna carry out that stuff? And that's why David's an important asset to the, the economic development.
Well, I think though, that, that's, that question answers itself. Because a master plan and a town center study, we have staff. That, those documents live with you and with our planning department. Like, that's where they live. And whether or not that town, the master plan sits on the shelf like it does in every other community for thirty years until somebody realizes, oh, no, we need to update this. That's totally up to, because there's no continuity on this board, right? You have these seats turnover all the time. That document in the master plan and the town center study, unless we're just doing these things to do them, that has to live with the town administration. And some of these things that we're talking about on these slides, these are your responsibility as the town administrator. And they're the planning division's responsibility. Which is why I'm, uh, this commission can be structured however way the board so chooses, and it will be. But again, some of these charges, this has to be something we have to look at as part of day-to-day business. And, and that, that doesn't fall to a volunteer board, that falls to town staff.
I, I, I hope you're, I hope you're not thinking that all of this is just pushed onto the board and it's not the intention of this. It was outlining the types of duties and things that economic development, but they're supposed to be high level. They're not supposed to be implementers. These are high level things that they should be looking at and considering and talking with staff at. But any board, be it this board or any board, is really a policy board in nature, not direct staff as you're referring to.
Right.
To the master plan question though, you know, the master plans are much broader than economic development. Master plans have all.
Oh, they're copy paste.
So there's only gonna be pieces of this master plan that I would take out of that master plan and give to the Economic Development Commission. There may be pieces, let's say, I do what I did in Southbridge. I basically made a project plan and I gave certain things to different departments I had to work on. There was road components, infrastructure components, I went to my DPW. Economic development, I had an economic development department, so those things went to my economic development corner. But the, the master plans are way broader than just economic development.
Yeah.
They take about, they talk about wetlands and open space and things that, so, so you, you know, you're right. That master plan would come to me to try to implement, maybe put the other team to the number, but I would cut out pieces for different people. Because I, I can't do everything in a master plan, so I'd have to cut out specialties to the different groups. But they would take a piece of it, that, that group might look at, you know, commercial properties, they might work with our, our planning board to decide. Maybe this piece of property shouldn't be zoned residential, maybe it should be pro-commercial. And they should work with the planning commission to change the zoning to make it more business friendly. That would be one of the things where the board could do that. That's a policy kind of decision. And David George would be instructing both the planning commission and the economic development commission to make sense or not from a land use perspective.
I mean, I, I like the idea of it and I think it touches base on a lot of kind of our, our goals and objectives, but I'm struggling a little bit even just as far as being point of contact. To me, one thing I think I've seen kind of the past year is if, if any of us are approached by an interested individual, who goes where with what information? And I think having a dedicated staff person as that point person is key. Because having it go to a, to a board is, well, okay, it's a what, seven-member board. Which, which board member are you going to? How is that?
David George would be the point person from my perspective. Now, you can change it to make it me. But from my perspective, David George would be that point person. That's what we need to put on the website. That's what we need to communicate.
But I'm just, I mean, so I guess a little bit similar to what you were saying, Mitch, is a lot of it seems like maybe taking a lot of what we've been talking about with town center study and master plan is the implementation part. And a lot of it costs money that we don't have right now, but, but maybe this is almost a piece of that, the economic development side, because that's a large part of what we've been working on and how to move forward with that. And so this group then has that, that they can work with existing businesses and, and everything. Look at, you know, we've had a lot of zoning questions. I think for the most part, zoning is where it generally should be. But roads and everything, definitely, there's some conversation about all of that. And so I wonder if, I mean, I, I, I don't know if this group is more kind of an action group that takes those pieces and, and continues to build on it.
Implement some, yeah.
Right.
But, yeah, so I mean, that, that obviously should be part of this group's charge is to get that information and to use that information to direct, I mean, I think it's, it's gonna, once the, the committee is established, they're gonna want to have a lot of more involvement in which directions they think they want to take. And it's gonna be based on the surveys and and that, you know, what that group wants to take as an approach. So I don't want to pin, you know, pin them down to very specific charges. I mean, I don't know if this is just too specific that they're gonna, I mean, I think it's gonna, you know, once they, once they are established and they start working, they're gonna probably want to, like I say, develop their own direction to some degree.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is what we've seen in the past several years. And we had the same issue with the prior TA, is that one person might get a call from a company or business or business owner and have an issue or express interest. And then whoever is on the other end of the line doesn't know what to do with it, and then it just dies on the vine. And then three months later, the town administrator finds out about it. And then you're scrambling to try to fix that issue. And we just went through that with the Woo Sox. I mean, and I know that Mike Nicholson had gone through it with folks over for the Heights property. And it was a struggle and a real fight for him to get that marketed and get the state out here because there was some opposition to that. And that was never brought anywhere. So my concern is if you don't have, like to Leah's point, you don't have that point person, what I don't want to happen, because we get calls all the time. Like, if I get a call and then I share it with you, Lyndon and Carol don't know about it, Leah doesn't know about it, and then where does that go? I mean, how does that information get, get kind of transferred around? So I, I, I like the charge as a generality if we can do some of these things, but you need to have staff, direct staff support involvement. And you need to have, whether it's you or David George, be the point person for these types of queries and issues.
I agree.
And we need to tie in the town study and the, and the
Oh, yeah.
input from the residents. That we're, we're in the midst of getting all that information, so that should somehow be incorporated in this group.
I completely get it. And truthfully, I expected to be David, as I was told, I think through you and others, that David was designed, that position was designed for that.
Yes.
And I'm not trying to shut up work as I do every day. I'm in front of the jack of all trades in the town. So I'm gonna help David support. Whatever David needs, I think he comes to me anyway. So I'm gonna end up being kind of a partner to David in this. And David and me, you know, we recently actually, the chair was on the phone call we had the other day talking about some economic development type things. But, but it's gonna be, David's a focus with me as a big supporter of what Dave's doing. It's the way it's probably gonna play out. And then for things like, you know, one-stop shopping, Mitch, I think that's critical too. You know, we're gonna have a team of people, myself, the building official, the planning official, DPW, fire chief. We have a team of people that reviews plans as well as a team instead of one at a time and stuff. So there is some of that one-stop shopping as well as part of the organization. But David would be the one that might, because let's say it was the Woo Sox and they reached out to David. David would be the one setting up that meeting for everybody, you know what I mean? So he would probably be the main point contact. But I see myself as playing a big role in that. And partially because it's my role, but partially because it's fun. That means one of the better part of the jobs is economic development stuff.
Well, and I, I also have a concern that he wears a lot of hats and he's, he's got a lot of things going on. So he's gonna need some support as far as direction, because he's doing, you know, he's reporting to the planning board and, and several other aspects too. So we want to make sure that he would, that we're giving him the time and it's being directed for the best use as far as it comes to this.
And truthfully, hopefully, some board members might be helpful in that regard. Maybe you have a Realtor who's on the board.
Yeah.
Who, you know, a business comes to town, is looking for, you know, industrial space and a Realtor might be about. So different board members sometimes offer specialties that can help people like David or myself, you know, help attract a business or provide information to the business. So that's why I think it's really important who you pick. I mean, I haven't recommended anybody for any positions, but I think the board has to be very serious about who you pick in bed and sport because the board's gonna be successful based upon the picks you make.
Right. So can we, are we able to vote on the creation of this tonight?
Yeah, just, we can set up the appointment later. What I would do is if you set the board to creation, and again, alter it any way you want, then what we'll do is I'll put out that the board is created and ask people who are interested to fill out a, you know, form saying they're interested. And then we'll come back to you guys for discussion as to what kind of appointments you want to make.
Right, so we can fine tune this. We just can create the board, fine to, fine tune the actual specific members.
And even the charge if you want it, yeah. So I'll go ahead then and make a motion to create the Rutland Economic Development Commission and allow Ron to try to solicit membership for review at a later date.
How many board members are there? You gotta give me basics. Do you want to use that, is it frameworked? If you guys want to change it, I would suggest making some little changes.
I wouldn't want a board much larger than this.
Yeah, I would say we cap, as part of my motion, I want to cap the limit to, to seven board members. And if we can't get seven, I would like to see it five.
Okay, so just, this has some conversation. So I gave you an exact spreadsheet of the makeup of this.
Yeah.
Right? Do you want to use this? Because I'm looking for certain types of people, like, I'm looking for business owners, for instance, because I want that kind of experience.
I think if you.
Does this make up what you're, you like?
I think the makeup, there is a little leeway. I mean, if you find somebody you like, I would just encourage people to come in front of this board with a letter of interest and we can make that decision.
I, I think this can be used as a guide to solicit members. And they will say a minimum of five and a maximum of seven. And the, and these are the type of individual, type of talents we're kind of looking for.
Because this is a board selection, gets one appointment here, a planning board gets a appointment. It doesn't have to be a member of the planning board, but somebody from their conservation commissioner. There's only, there's only two business owners and then wasn't one resident. That's three members of the general community. Other people are either members of boards or them recommending somebody. So you can increase it. If you want more business people, you could get rid of the assessor designate, for instance.
Right. I think we'll leave ourselves that flexibility.
Right, yeah, because like Mitch said, we, we want some people that are town, you know, employees involved in it, that are, you know, designated to the town as well as some residents. So I think this is a good guide to use this who we want to target. But, and, and keep it at a minimum of five and a maximum of seven.
But just know that at the next meeting, you're gonna have to set in a formal process, because this is gonna go from years and years with terms and stuff. So if you're not gonna do it tonight, we are gonna have to establish the terms and the people and all that stuff for the future meeting.
Right, and we're gonna have to fine tune the, the charge.
Yeah, so my motion was just to create it.
Okay, I just want to understand the thought process kind of move forward, okay?
And if I may, just update business to farm and business owner. I know a lot of farmers do consider themselves business owners, but also some.
Agricultural slash businesses.
Right, right. And one thing in the, under the staff part, I don't, I saw it in the presentation, I'm not sure if I see it on there.
This is slightly different than the presentation.
But here I see conservation agent. And currently, we do not, as a, one of the staff members supporting the, the commission, the economic development commission. I don't think we currently have a conservation agent. And so I know that that's something that I think Kong Kong has been twanging around with for, for a while. But just that, as of right now, we don't have, so.
Again, it was a Charlton thing, I missed that.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Wait a minute, a second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Um, I would like to, I would, so it's five, six, and seven. I'd like to have a resident, a business owner who is a resident and maybe a business owner who is not a resident. I think it just.
We want to have one resident business owner and one non-resident?
It's not part of the motion, okay.
We're not setting the membership.
This all requires.
I know that he's gonna be starting to solicit.
So I guess he would consider that we would solicit outside of town.
Yeah, because I, I, I put resident business owner, but I, it's a good question. Do you want that business owner to be a resident or can we have an owner that's not a resident?
I think you have a lot of owners that aren't residents and I don't want to exclude them if they're, they still own property in town in their.
So just, to just cross out resident on one of them, yes, yeah.
Just on one, yeah.
But not has that Rutland.
Okay.
Um, for, I'm, I'm just not one hundred percent sure for the formation because this is a commission. If there's a residency requirement when we form commission, oh, it looks like Peter's here to provide.
Those who have been through this with me before, and all Peter crannies, wait, yes, the, um, the town has a bylaw that says that all boards are, can only be, uh, be populated with registered voters who therefore must definitionally be residents and town employees.
Okay, that does your business now.
Right, and we have made.
We can have ad hoc members though.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we've had ad hoc or ex officio non-voting members that participate.
By, by the way, you know, a group like this has the ability to set up sub-communities of all kinds of stuff. They could set up a tourist sub-community, I think of all kinds of stuff.
Well, I mean, we can have that discussion when we have people in. I think we just, we take the first step tonight and then we'll work on refining it as we move forward.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? So roll, roll call?
Kalakai.
Benoidai.
Rurcityai.
Waitmanai.
And Nicholsai.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
All right. All right, so I think from this, unless we have any other, if I can get a motion, should we close out?
I have a question. In my packet, I have this certified copy of vote. And can we talk about this at the beginning that I missed or is this something?
No, we, we didn't. I don't know. I think that Anita was just hiding for a copy of that, right?
Okay.
The certified copy of the vote, but that's just.
Yeah, I think that she just submitted.
That's just information.
Okay, and veteran services.
And because we're doing this on Zoom, I think the motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn. But because it's on Zoom, do we also have to include that language?
To propose a motion to adjourn to executive session to return to open session.
Only for this purpose.
For a possible vote.
For a possible vote.
And I am.
I'm gonna make the motion, I'm gonna make the motion that echoes Tamika, but also, okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for reason number one and reason number two. To come out of exec, with the potential coming out of executive session for the purposes of voting.
And adjourn.
And adjourning from open session.
But they're voting only on item number one. It's a limitation, I was gonna say there's an expectation.
I think that that motion covers us legally.
Looks like a net.
Your roll call.
Roll, roll call, roll.
Kalakai.
Benoidai.
Rurcityai.
Waitmanai.
Nicholsai. So we'll be going into executive session, reason number one.
Aye.